Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council. It is September the 15th, and the year is flying by. We will start off with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes, as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Fister, call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Klitsky is absent.
Thank you.
Council President.
Yes.
Sorry. I meant to ask you this earlier, but I was reminded as we were looking at the signups, would it be possible for us to take a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk and his family?
If that's your request.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. Tonight, we're going into our Boarding Commission appointments. Any testimony for those?
We had two people sign up as call-ins, but nobody is on the WebEx currently.
Okay. Before us tonight is appointments for the Community Housing and Human Services Board. One appointment, Ali Mogadishai, Community Housing and Human Services Board. One appointment, Ashley Erickson. And the Office of Police Ombudsman, one reappointment, Amy McCrone. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Can we take these separately?
We can, as in each one or the two different departments? The ombudsman.
To make it simple.
Okay. So let's just take them separately, then. On the CHHS Board, one appointment, Ali Mogadishai. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
That was two noes. Thank you. On Ashley Erickson, CHHS Board. All those in favor of Ashley, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Extentions? Thank you. And the one for the Office of the Police Ombudsman Commission, this is a reappointment. This is Amy McCrone. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Thank you. Those are approved. Thank you all for your service on behalf of the city. Onto any commentary on the consent agenda?
All right, same call-in person, not on the WebEx, so...
Yes, Mr. Cathcart.
If I could just make a quick comment. I understand there might be a very positive motive behind this, but I would just encourage the individual signing up to consider the distraction and the time it takes us to deal with that and not hear the testimony from the folks who really want to provide it, so...
Thank you. We have Derek Azaro. And then Charlie Weir. Thank you.
Derek Azaro, here, supporting the children in Spokane. This is on the mayor's pending report here. Hundred thousand dollars plus for travel expenses. Kind of questionable on that one. Catholic charities is more money. I'd like to propose, on the agenda, you've got like eight contracts. Each contract is an agenda item you have to discuss and review and talk about. But when it comes to payments by, to nonprofits in the budget of the mayor that she pays through this system, if you go through all the bills that she pays, they look pretty legit, most of them. You know, it's your utility bills and retirement funds and all that. I feel that all contracts that have to do with any nonprofits should not just be blanket-approved every week, because you pretty much have to vote yes on every single week on approving her expenditures of the money. There's no discussion with the nonprofit what they're up to. That's why I feel it should be every week an agenda item. If you're going to give a nonprofit money, it should be on the agenda itself for discussion and review, so the public can actually make their comments on it. We can come in here and comment on the fact you give Catholic charity any of money, but it doesn't mean anything, because you have to automatically approve her budget request, the money she's already spent. So I feel that all the contracts that are paid through her, through her this account, definitely should be extracted out of that and put on as a regular agenda item, just like every other contract you have on here. All these contracts require, you know, a laundry list of obligations of insurance or unemployment, whatever. But you don't have any of that accountability when you automatically approve every single week the money you give to nonprofits via this process of approving her expenditures for utilities and the operations of the city. It's normal. If you look on there, I've called out in the past a few things that didn't look right, like the hundred, over hundred thousand dollars for travel expenses, without anything behind it. But I strongly feel that everything else, as far as nonprofits being paid any money at all, should be pulled out and put on here as a separate item, agenda item, so the public can comment on it, all the councilmembers can comment on it and support it or go against it. This way, every single week...
And thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Have tensions? The consent agenda is passed. Ms. Fister.
Resolution 2025-66, approving the appointment of Assistant Police Chief Dave Singley as the Director of Administration and Investigation within the Spokane Police Department.
No public testimony? Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Assistant Chief Dave Singley. He's been a great member of this department for a long time, and I think he's going to do a fantastic job in this position. And very good pick by the chief and the mayor. I think that this is going to be great for the city.
Thank you. Any commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. That's six zero.
We don't have a... We're missing one.
We'll try it again. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-67, approving the appointment of Assistant Police Chief Steve Wall as the Director of Patrol within the Spokane Police Department.
There is no public comment? Council commentary? I think we can echo Councilmember Bingle. Councilmember Bingle?
That's, I mean, I'm just going to say it again. You know, Steve Wall, again, is another great pick. Both of these gentlemen are studs. They're going to do a great job for the city, and I congratulate Assistant Police Chief Steve Wall on this appointment. Well deserved.
We echo that. Any other council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-68, regarding the adoption of a public rule for water and hydroelectric department for cross-connection control program.
No public comment? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-72, appointing members to the Equity Subcommittee of the City Council's Finance and Administration Committee.
Seeing no public comment? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36747, updating the name and duties of existing departments within the Spokane Police Division, amending section 3.01a.370, 3.01a.375, and 3.01a.400 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
No public comment? Council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36749 will be considered under hearings item H1. Ordinance C 36743, establishing the Spokane United 911 Network to serve as the city of Spokane's primary public safety answering point, amending section 3.01a.430 and 7.08.132, and repealing chapters 3.12 and 6.10 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
There is no public commentary? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's six zero.
First reading ordinance is C 36750, amending Spokane Municipal Code, Section 17C.111.205, to clarify the correct version of SMC Table 17C.111.205-2. Ordinance C 36718, modifying the membership of the Climate, Resilience, and Sustainability Board to include a liaison designated by the Community Assembly, and amending sections 4.41.020 and .030 of the Spokane Municipal Code. And ordinance C 36742, an interim zoning ordinance, permitting daycare and childcare centers in all residential and commercial zones, amending Spokane Municipal Code, Section 17C.111.100, .110, and 17C.190.430. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Thank you. Derek Azaro?
Derek Azaro, supporting the children in Spokane. After looking through this, when I scrolled down the page on the agenda, I saw a large piece on the university, Gonzaga. There was a survey done, and it was a lot of information about how the employees and the students all want daycare centers for their employees and the students. Like, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed, on the surface, to me, it seems like what's really behind this ordinance is getting them daycare and, for the employees and the students. It's not really, looks like it's looking at the map. It covers not to Mission Street. It's like a block from Mission, all the way out to Second Street. So if you're going to have an ordinance where you're going to have daycare, it should be for the entire city, or at least District 1 and that whole area. There's a lot of children, I guess, that don't have the daycare available to them, but it just, like I said, it seems on the surface like this is basically going to benefit the university. So I think it's only fair to make it an item that we can actually openly discuss. I don't think this should be in a first reading. I think it should be a regular agenda item, where we can actually openly discuss every single detail of this, what you're asking for, especially looking at the two people that are sponsoring this. So I strongly feel that going forward, that this be, not be written in a way that benefits one entity of the city, especially just the university. They already occupy over 62% of all the housing in Logan neighborhood. Families can't even live there, because they take up all the rentals.
And thank you, Derek, your time is up. Anyone else? All right. Let's just see if there's one online. No, we do not. We're going to go into the hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing on the matter, Unified Development Code Interim Ordinance, SMC 17C.425.010. We will call this to order. Are there any staff reports on this hearing?
Excuse me, Council President. Would you like me to read it first?
Please, go ahead.
H1, final reading ordinance, C 36749, to extend the duration of interim zoning ordinance, C 36646, concerning height limits, setting a public hearing and reiterating a work program.
Again, this is now the time set for the hearing. Is there any staff reports? Seeing none, is there any commentary from the audience? We'll confirm that.
Charlie, if you're online, you can speak to this.
Not hearing you, Charlie. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the hearing. Any council commentary on this item? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I'm just excited for this extension right here. It will soon be publicly codified, but...
Excuse me, did we want to take a vote first to close the hearing?
I always do this comment, but yes, take a vote to close the hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? The hearing is now closed. Councilmember Bingle, continue.
Do we need to make a motion to adopt?
Yes.
Yeah, so moved.
It's a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Councilmember Bingle?
Okay, now I'll speak to it. No, I'm excited for this one. You know, removing height limits in the city of Spokane has been something I've worked on for a long time. We already adopted it for six months. We're going to adopt it permanently, but it is something where, you know, if you're wanting to see Spokane really step into becoming a top 100 city, I think that this is a necessary step for us to build what is necessary here for both housing and commerce. And specifically only in the downtown area. We remove the height limits downtown, because that's, again, where all the infrastructure is already built out. It makes the most sense for us to be building our biggest buildings there. And so I'm excited that this is going to move forward again. I thank council for their support on this. This, again, has been another issue where I think we've all been pretty unified on it, and so I think this is a good step for us.
Great, thank you. Any other council commentary? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as president.
So moved.
We already have a motion.
But did we pass it? We were actually having council commentary.
So the motion in second already happened, and now...
All those in favor? Prepare to vote. Thank you. That's six zero. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. We will now go into open forum. Remember, you have two minutes. All your comments are to be directed towards the chair. No copying, no booing, and we're really requesting civility. Jackson?
Yeah. Do you want me to call the first person? Yeah, Clayton Drake.
Thank you all for letting me come back. And I just wanted to give an update from the last time I was here. President Wilkerson reached out to me and hooked me up with someone who she thought would help me, but it had to do with the VA. And the VA and I don't see eye to eye, because they've crippled me. You know? And, excuse me, I'll turn around. This is what the VA did. I have stage-two cirrhosis of the liver. They never told me. Due to lack of care, I lost my leg. And due to bot surgery, my hands crippled. Again, what I came here looking for was...
Clayton.
Okay, I'll turn around.
Yeah, thank you.
What I came here looking for was some way to get this out other than just Spokane. Because after the day's over with, I'm going to go home, and I'm going to be back in the same boat I am right now. I live in pain constantly. I'm constantly depressed. I have suicide ideations all the time because of my pain, because of what's been happening to me. And what I need to do is get this out of Spokane. This needs to go national, and that's what I'm trying to do. Right? I will be coming down to the, was it Town Hall meeting on the 29th? I'll be coming there. So I just want to let you know that I appreciate what I got. I appreciate the acceptance I got. And I will close with this. As I was sitting outside waiting to come in, there were a couple of people talking about Charlie Kirk in a way that was disrespectful. The man lost his life in front of his wife and kids. And to sit there and glorify that or talk bad about it is disgraceful, no matter who you are. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Derek Azaro, and then Eugene Noles.
Derek Azaro, supporting kids in Spokane. Let me give you a report card on your Prop 1 program that you guys came up with, Dillon, and the rest of you. Here's a report card. Marietta Avenue, Logan Park. Three episodes already. First one, in broad daylight, 10 o'clock in the morning, two people in the park with a mattress in front of kids driving, walking by, or riding by. I'll give you, I'm going to use your imagination, what they were doing in the open air. Second event, handful of people camped on the sidewalk at the water department outside the fence there by the school in defiance, right next to the school across from the park and the school. Third episode, just the other day, people came in. Poor people came in, set up a tent back in the corner. The neighbors drove by, stopped, said, hey, you can't be doing that. And they got the big F-word. This is what you got by shooting down Prop 1. Our neighborhood is being subjected to this, because now people are thinking they can do whatever they want. You're doing it, you want daycare centers. Well, that's a good thing. But at the same time, you took away all protection for daycares. No camping around schools, daycare. But you want daycares in the Logan neighborhood and around town. But you took away all the protection for the children in this community by doing that. You've left the children with nobody to back them up, nobody to support them, because you want to pass your leftist, Marxist, socialist, communist behavior. Five to two, every single meeting. You got a member over here, Zepone, who has a private phone call, private conversations going on during meetings with the mayor. This kind of thing is going to stop. You need to start dialoguing with each other. Stop the five to two. Give these people a time to talk.
And thank you, Derek. Your time is up. Eugene?
Yes, good evening, Councilor Eugene Noles. I've lived here in Spokane since 2010. As you probably know from my coming up here many times, I'm an advocate for homeless. And I've been kind of stalled on coming up with what to say, because after two years of this administration, and I guess it's eight or 12 years of the previous administrations, things have just stalled here in the city. And I've used this term a couple of times here recently, is, see, as Spokane is living in a fantasy bubble with regard to the homeless situation. There isn't the proper energy to solve it. And I hear a lot of people, and it's my view too, that all the people living and sleeping in the streets downtown need to be carefully moved to a place where they can survive and not downtown. That only makes common sense. But so far, nothing's happened.
Thank you. Jackson Dines, welcome. And after Jackson, Justin Holler.
Good evening. My name's Jackson Dines. I'm from Spokane County. On Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, at 12:23 PM, we lost a man who was a father, a husband, a man who loved his country, and even more importantly, a faithful Christian. Now, I could go on and on about politics on this, but this has not hit me as much politically, but spiritually. Last night, I found a part of scripture that really hit me. John 12:23, the time he was shot and killed. The Bible says this. "Now the time has come for the Son of Man to enter into his glory." That hit me so hard, I went into, I threw up. I just, I couldn't take it. Now, another thing I want to echo is what Erica Kirk had to say a few nights ago. She said, in quote, "The cries of this widow will echo around the world like a battle cry." And here I am to echo that battle cry. And millions of people are behind me. I will end with this. We, the people of Spokane, stand behind Erica Kirk. We, the people of the United States, stand behind Erica Kirk. And even more, we, the people of the world, stand behind Erica Kirk. Prayers to her and prayers to this nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Justin, if you're in line, you can go ahead.
Hello?
Will we hear you, Justin?
Yeah, Justin Holler, District One. I, I'm really sad and disheartened about Charlotte Kirk's murder, and I, I know that I don't, I don't often talk about national or international things, but this is a, a problem when you have radical people on any side, left, right, it doesn't matter. But people who are willing to delete somebody because they simply have a different opinion is horrible. And I'm wondering if any of you on City Council are willing to denounce the actions of Charlie Kirk's assassin? Because you sure didn't denounce BLM when there were riots in the streets, and there were looting and breaking windows downtown. Most of you seem just perfectly okay with the, the horrible violence and destruction and loss of property that happened during the BLM riots, and you seem perfectly okay with that. And it's just really sad and disheartening to, to know that you, you won't denounce one side, and one side it seems to be okay, but then the other side, oh, no, 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 that's okay. And I'm just wondering if any of you will publicly denounce the, these, this action? It would speak volumes to unity, which we desperately need. As much as I vehemently disagree with most of your belief systems and, and your, and your policies and the waste of money, I don't wish harm on any of you. I just disagree, and eight years of soccer taught me, you can have an opponent, and, 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 you know, at the end of the day, that's all you are, just an opponent on, on, on the ba, on the battlefield, so to speak, a soccer field, and then, you know, you shake hands, and you're done.
Thank you, Justin, your time is up. Next we have Catherine Corrick.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Corrick, I live in District Two. Along the lines of the gentleman that just spoke, I think it's appalling, no matter what one's beliefs, for anyone to be assassinated for speaking them publicly. That shouldn't happen in this country. But the thing I really wanted to speak about today, though briefly, was what the other gentleman spoke about earlier, was the status of homelessness in this country, in this city. We have all kinds of rules about where people cannot camp, where people cannot be, where people cannot live, and we don't have anything about where they can be, where they are allowed to live. Even though the Business Association has been working relentlessly to try to come up with a policy that would be acceptable, the glaring omission is where can people be? So, I think that omission needs to be addressed, and as the gentleman said, there needs to be places where people can be legally, and then be directed to services that they need if they want them. Thank you.
Thank you Catherine, next is Kyle Osborne, and then Lilly Cantu.
Hello.
Welcome.
So, I was really shook up about Charlie Kirk's death. I don't wanna be mean to you, Jesus Christ doesn't want me to be mean to you. I really do love most of you, or all of you, I just, I believe the Holy Bible is the living word of God. You know, and I study the Bible day and night, and I'm not always so nice on Facebook, I, and most of you know that, so, but I don't really wanna just be a keyboard warrior and be mean to you. I don't believe that the Democratic Socialist Party is the right party to even exist on this earth. I believe your, that party is satanic, like, and if you look at pro-choice, if you look at Planned Parenthood and fifteen thousand babies being murdered in women's wombs every year in Washington state alone, and then you look at five hundred thousand babies being murdered in the United States in, in mothers' wombs, all these pregnancies are, it's not medically necessary to kill those babies. Women just spread their legs and there's no consequences, so, why not, you just have the baby, and all these people that wanna adopt babies, they could adopt those babies, why murder those babies? Why does the Democratic Party murder those babies? Why do you care so much about illegal immigrants trespassing into our country with terrorists, and you don't stop those babies from being murdered? Why do you help Planned Parenthood? Why are you a homosexual when the Bible says?
Sir, sir, please direct all your comments to the chair.
Eight different times, eight different times in the Bible homosexuality is forbidden. It's, it is, look at Sodom and Gomorrah. So, I mean, it's just, it's pretty clear in the Bible where you're going. So, it's pretty clear where you're going. And I, you know, I just think that if you would read the Bible, you would see more clearly, I, I wish all of you would become Christian, I don't want anybody to go to hell, you know? That's what Charlie Kirk would want me to tell you that, I don't want you to go to hell, I would debate any of you, and I would win.
And sir, your time is up, thank you. Lilly? Is she online? I don't see Lilly, we'll go to Mick Thompson? Is Mick in there?
Hello, my name is Mick Thompson, I'm a resident of Spokane. I would like to use my two minutes to talk on an international matter that Spokane City Council has decided to take a stance on. I am talking about the conflict between Israel and Palestine. Throughout history, genocide has left some of humanity's darkest marks. It is the systematic destruction of people, their lives, their culture, their very existence, and it can never be justified. Whether it happens in full view of the world or under the cover of silence, genocide is a crime against humanity, not just those being targeted. When we look back at atrocities of the past, we ask, how could people have stood by? How could leaders, communities, and ordinary citizens allow it to continue? Today, we didn't have the excuse of not knowing, we live in a time when information is instant, when human suffering is visible as it's happening. Condemning genocide should not be controversial, nor should it depend on politics, geography, or identity. It is about affirming the truth that no group of people should ever be marked for destruction. Silence in the face of mass killing is complicity, speaking out is the least we can do, and it is necessary. That is why I'm asking Spokane City Council to review its last resolution on Israel and Palestine, and to amend it to explicitly call for a ceasefire, and to affirm the rights of Palestinians. Furthermore, I urge this council to carry the voice of its people forward, addressing this issue with higher levels of government. We cannot undo past atrocities, but we can choose to not be a part of the current ones. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sunshine?
Sunshine Wigan, I was born in Spokane. I just wanna say thank you to the City Council for being the people that you are up here when doors are closed for us homeless. Like, I see you guys being, how you guys represent up here is how I see you acting in our community when no one's looking, and I appreciate that. I appreciate all the kind deeds that you do for us, that go unnoticed, they're not unnoticed. I just, I pray for blessings for you guys. And then, with our shelter system, I hope we get these little houses put up soon, because it's just horrible watching these people sleep outside, our shelter system is so broken, and not just in Spokane, it's not working. Houston is going to where they're starting to do housing first and kinda doing away with the hotel shelters, I don't know if you guys saw that article, as you guys were looking into Houston a few back. I'm at a point where I qualify because of I'm so sick from the long-term effects of homelessness for the Right to Die With Dignity Act, and I was approved for it, but then, and they, they don't do it in Spokane, the closest place is Seattle. But then, I thought, I've been fighting for it for a long time, and then I started thinking about all the good things that I was able to do in life, and the time that I got to spend with good people, and I have this want to try to fight for life still, and I didn't think it was still there, but it is. And I'm facing, facing a really hard road, but I just wanna say thank you, thank you so much for the support you're giving me, and thank you to everybody that's watching and in this room. I couldn't do it without you guys, and I wouldn't have got this far without you guys, thank you.
Thank you Sunshine, Will Hewings?
Good evening, my name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown Spokane. So, I am Charlie, tonight, I need to speak about something from my heart, as someone that comes up here, that speaks a, a lot, I've experienced, and this ain't about me, but I've experienced death threats, I've had people take me to court, someone that you work with took me to court, tried to silence me, my speech. Now, Charlie, he got shot, now I don't know if you guys care, but the Democrats, you guys are pretty, pretty sick, especially online. It sickens me, and it, it, it hurts me to my heart knowing that people find that funny. I, you know, if Joe Biden or a Democrat, any of you guys, any of you guys, if something was to happen to you, I would, I would feel, I would, I would, I don't know, because you guys, I mean, even though we see things differently, you do mean a lot to me. And so, Charlie Kirk, yeah, he's a Republican, but this guy, I mean, he inspired me, I'm almost fifty years old, and he inspired a lot of young people. And, you know, he was a man of God, I mean, this guy, if you ever watch him, but he's being smeared now, and people think it's funny, and I, I just find it sick, but I hope people wake up and see what's happening in our country, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Will. That concludes our open forum for this evening, please remember next Monday night, we will be at West, nope, we'll be right back here, I'm hitting myself. We'll see you next Monday night, right here in chambers, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all, have a good night.